I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're out here in person. We do have our city attorney appearing by Zoom, but otherwise the council is here, so we're not going to bother with local votes or anything like that. Starting with our council activity reports, since we last met in March, we had our city council working retreat that I was at all day. We did a number of things that came from that. One of the things was Tarek and I had some phone calls with some potential candidates or people who have in some form or fashion expressed an interest in potentially serving as a public works director in 30 years when our current one retires. So Tarek and I spoke with a couple of folks, both of whom expressed interest in applying, and said that they were here for the long haul. So based on that, Tarek and I are recommending the policies and procedures that we just go forward with local hiring instead of looking at like a headhunting firm like DVA or something like that. And that gives us a little bit more breathing room in terms of timeline and things. Otherwise, I had the noxious weed training meeting up in Greenwell, learned all about the weeds that are going to kill us if they grow up around here. It was interesting. That's how we'll put it. We had an airport board meeting, discussed about raising some of the rates at the airport for the private hangars, and then along with an environmental board meeting on the 4th discussing preparations for the upcoming hazardous waste cleanup. Ron, are we fully staffed for that now, or do some of the council members need to be voluntold what to do?
If there are some more volunteers that would like to step up, we could use a couple more.
Okay. If anybody on the council wants to help out on the 27th, being there very early in the morning, helping out for a few hours, we could use some extra hands. Many hands make light work, so they say. So we'd appreciate any help that can be there. Why is that is... Oh, I'm sorry. We also had a meeting with members of the hospital in Code Red discussing the history of how the hospital's helping to pay for that, and they're going to continue helping to pay. We're sort of going to revisit that agreement next year. Gave them some training tips on how to use it and things like that. So we'll revisit that in a few months, but things are status quo for right now. That's all I have. Neil?
I just had a couple of things. The March 27th, our council retreat at the Green Roof, basically what all the departments wants and wishes are, kind of like Christmas. We don't know if Santa will be coming. On the 4th, the policy and procedures, did a police candidate interview, and at the end of the day, we said he wasn't the right mix for our department. And tonight, we had public works, talked about safe routes to school, the Lake Avenue Bridge Bank that is disappearing, and 25, 26 snowplowing season, which we hope this year is over so we can talk about next year.
Don't want to. Megan?
I had a park and tree board meeting, which we discussed the Amby Park bids and what we're going to do thereafter, which I think is going to be a point of discussion later on. Also, the concert in the park program will be six weeks this summer instead of four, which is going to be great. I also had the special council retreat meeting. I went to the grand opening of Tractor Supply, which was really well attended, and so I hope to see some great support for that in our community. I'm supposed to give a shout out to Susan who's watching. Hi, Susan. And I will be at City White Clean Up this year because I look forward to it. It's all year round, actually, so be excited.
I was also at Tractor Supply, I think, reminding me of that one. Not cut. Watched them cut the Super Fun Cut.
I got here too late for that, but I did not miss the Taco Truck, so that was awesome.
I missed that. Talent show.
Gee.
I was at Tractor Supply, too, so.
There you go.
I had the roofing cut in. And also the retreat that we did and the policies and procedures meeting.
Correct.
And the talent show on Saturday.
Paul?
I have nothing to report.
Department heads, Ron?
Thank you. The compost site will be opening this week, very likely Wednesday weather permitting. High ground flushing is going to be April 17th and 18th next week. As you noted, the spring cleanup is the 27th. Our surplus dot, if anybody wants to bid on it, is on Min bid, and that is due tomorrow. Also, on the park agenda, we did have somebody who's going to donate us a large 10 to 12-foot spruce tree. We can get that growing for our winter activities. Water festival will be May the 17th. Like everybody heard, the sirens are all tested, and they are all in working order. Seal coat bids are going to be on tomorrow at 11 o'clock. Airport crack sealing bids are on Thursday. The library is having their story stroll at the end of the school year, May the 13th to the 27th. They will have these signs up in the gazebo park. And the airshow is on the 24th of August. Thank you.
Thank you.
In addition to some of the boards I was attended, park and tree, environmental and airport, we had two interviews, someone for the liquor store clerk position and then police officer position. Also was with you guys in Code Red with Centricare discussing what they're going to do with that next. And then Ron, Chuck and I participated in the LCC MR call. This is the environmental review of the water testing in the four cities which we are managing that project, which is Blainfully, Alexandria and Painesville. We saw after the report, along with the recommendations, and we had a chance to kind of, you know, give our feedback and have a call with them. So the final report will be coming out soon, and then it will be shared. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for Ron or Tarek? Anybody here for our open forum? Okay. Move on then. Adoption of our consent agenda includes the minutes on pages, page one, warrant vouchers on page two totaling $305,989.3. Entertain a motion unless somebody wants something pulled.
Solved.
Motion by Hersberg. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Soini. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Carries. All right. Hiring of Realtor for city lots. Tarek, tell us about this.
Yeah, this was brought up last year. A local Realtor was interested in representing the city and to sell some of the lots. It was discussed last year in council, and council decided not to do anything with it at the time. And it was brought up again, and we discussed at the last meeting, and council members said, well, we should see if there are any interested Realtors in town that would want to or would be interested in this. And so I invited them here today to see what their interest is in representing us in selling city-owned residential lots.
Okay. Anybody want to address the council? I don't care if anyone wants to go first, or I can listen to people. I know Tarek invited folks, so just ask that you give us your name along with how you're affiliated to, or your business name, whatever it is.
So I'm Riley Flanders. I work with my dad and a couple others at Patrick Flanders Realty. Thanks for giving us the opportunity to come tonight. I know there's pros and cons here. I read what was in the paper from last week, and I don't discount your concerns, Neil. I think there's kind of different ways of looking at it. You can, you can look at the cost, or you can look at the opportunity. My hope is that there's more pros here than cons for you guys. We've got quite a bit of experience working over there in the last couple of years. We first listed two lots on Kira Lane in 2022, and those closed, I think, in September of '22. And then just a little less than a year ago, we listed 17 lots on South Street and Maywood. So far, we've sold seven of those. And so we've had seven the last year, nine the last two years that we've sold over there. And we've got pretty good momentum, too. There's two spec builders who've purchased over there, and then we're in communication, actually, with four others who are considering spec building over there. So we haven't seen a lot of spec building in Painesville since I've been in real estate, which would be seven years now. So it's kind of nice to see that happening again. We've also got some ongoing conversation with private citizens as well who would be building their own home there. So I think that, you know, with that kind of momentum in a, in a year or seven, a year, the ongoing communication, both with private citizens as well as spec builders, I believe the momentum will continue. I think if you list with us, I think we'll get some sold here in the next year. Obviously, there's no guarantees there, but I believe that we will. I think if I'm right, obviously, that's good for me, and I think it's good for the city in at least two ways, too. You know, one, to have additional housing availability, which is something I know you guys have been working on in numerous ways, and two, to get additional tax revenue, particularly when those, those lots are approved upon. So I, you know, I see it as a, as a situation where there's two pros for you and one con. The pros are additional housing and, and the eventual tax revenue, and the con is you need to pay me to do my jobs. So, you know, I have no bitterness if you choose not to go that route, but I do think that if you do, we'll make things happen and make those lots move faster than they would if you didn't work with us. You know, we're, we're advertising, we're, we're, you know, marketing, communicating with people all the time. I live this life. Everywhere I go, I talk to people at real estate. So we keep constant lists of prospective prospects and go over those every week. So, yeah, I think there's a high likelihood that we can keep the momentum going, and I can see that benefiting the city. So I hope you choose to list with us.
Anybody have questions?
Any questions for Riley?
Good.
Okay. Anybody else want to talk to us about... Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm Andy Maher with Maher Realty, Maher Actioners, group in Painesville as well, along with Riley. I work with my dad as well. He initially worked with the Ampies when they first developed that area in town, and we've worked and sold a lot of lots, too. I pulled some data because I know it's important to look at that, not just, you know, talking about concepts, but since January of 2022, lots have sold about 10 to 1 versus ones that have been listed online versus the city sold one, I believe, in 2022. Many of those are town buyers as well, so it's not just, you know, trying to get word of mouth with the people around here to get these lots sold. There's two things that I think are important for the city to get the lots to move. One is being competitive on price, and from my understanding, you guys are. The other piece, though, is the exposure. And listing with a broker and getting it on multiple listing services is one of the key ways to get that exposure, to make sure everyone knows that the city does have these lots available and get them to move. Because there's no reason that some of your lots aren't any more appealing than some of the other ones that have sold recently. Some of the ones that have sold back up to the highway, you guys, those first couple on Kira Lane are probably more appealing lots, in my opinion, as well. So, work in this and the auction business full-time as well, very connected to Painesville, and would be honored to work with the city if they choose to move forward with it. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any else want to... Okay. What are the council's thoughts?
Well, we know what we need from the lots to cover our deferred assessments. So that's over 16,000, then, plus what we paid for them. And also, housing incentive money that we have. So.
Bill, if this is something where we elect to move forward with a Realtor, we need to send this out for bids or requests for proposals, something like that?
You don't have to, but you certainly could. I think, you know, there's something on your agenda later that might impact this, but I mean, I guess they don't have to be talked about at the same time, but... But I mean, it might make sense to get proposals. I don't know anything about, you know, people's rates, you know, how you would be charged or so forth by the Realtor. So you might want to do that, but you don't have.
Right. And that's sort of my thought, is that if we do a request for proposals, we can compare the numbers to it, see how it lines up as far as commission rates, things like that, what exactly we're looking for. That wouldn't include necessarily just commission rates, but also proposals on how things would be listed on the MSL, how they'd be advertised, so that we can rightfully consider all the things that have been talked about. Getting that exposure is important. Working with people who might have sold more, I think, can also have a benefit in the long run. But my thought is that if we're going to do this, a request or putting it out for proposals is the way to go.
I think you're, you're right with that, that what we can, again, crunch the numbers and decide what we have in writing. We need to understand it better and make a more intelligent decision at the time.
I like the idea of the multiple listing as far as the MSL, so that gets a lot more... Maybe we can sell the last of them. What, eight or nine left?
And also, I mean, doing proposals, I don't... The way it sort of feels like kicking the can down the road, but we do have something on our agenda that could alter this. So it gives time for that to pan out and see if it's even necessary. And then we can decide at that point, once we have the numbers, if we want to, if we should, or go from there.
So then I'd like to make a motion to request proposals from Michael Maher Realty and Patrick Flanders Realty. There's a third one there, too.
There's a third one.
Well, I think what the consensus of the council is, is that we direct the city administrator to put together a request for proposals packet to distribute among local Realtors and anyone else who might be interested. Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Okay. There's a motion by Thielen to have a request for proposal packet drafted and put together. Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Second by Brick. I will say, I'm not entirely on board with it. I think, I didn't watch the meeting, but I saw your comments, Neil, in the press. I think those are well-founded.
I guess, before we vote, I think we ought to ourselves to wait until we're done with our closed sessions tonight and see where we are. Because in fairness to the Realtors, too, if we decide we don't need them, and it would be unfair to have them both do the work of proposals, and we aren't going to consider it. So I think we should wait. Tarek can get in touch with them, and if we decide to go ahead, and if we decide not, Tarek can also tell them we decided not to.
That's kind of what the motion was.
Well, the motion was to pull out for proposals.
How about this? Let's go... We go forward as is, and if something happens with our closed session later that might change this, Tarek could certainly pass along the message, and I would entertain a vote at that time to reconsider this.
Because otherwise, you'll lose their time.
Yep, I agree with you 100%.
Can we just make a contingent upon our decision later?
Well, I think let's go forward, and if we need to have a motion to reconsider this before the end of our meeting tonight, we can. But the motion's been made and seconded, so I'll call the question. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We shall be in touch. Thank you all for being here tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Okay, on to really big numbers. Ron, Tarek, John, someone?
That should... Yeah, as you can see, we opened bids last week for the shelter project. We got two bids. Both bids came in significantly higher than what we were hoping to, hoping to...
Can you speak into the microphone so Bill can hear you?
Sorry about that. So since then, what we've done is, obviously, we met with the trail board and went through it, or the park boards, excuse me. I know we've also been in touch with the board to look at ways to cutting the cost. I think with some, with some changes to some of the wall finishings and stuff, we've been able to bring it down in that $75,000 range, and we're waiting on some additional deducts if we change some things as well. We've also been in touch with the DNR about our grant amount to see if we can trigger some additional grant, and they are reviewing that request and going to get back to us as well. I was hoping to get that today, but I did not hear back from them yet today. So I think once, once we get the answer to some of these questions, we'll, we'll be able to come back to the council with the sort of a complete recommendation.
Remind me, were we initially...
5:20.
5:25?
5:25. And if you look back, we had gotten a quote, an actual quote for a budgetary quote in 2022, for about a little over $290,000. When we pursued the grant, we raised it actually to 380. And then in 2023, we actually raised it again to five, five and a, five something, so.
So from 2022 to now, it went up $400,000?
Yep.
Apparently.
No, I'm not down there. I'm just saying.
No. Well, in our decision at the park board level was that we were going to wait to hear back from the DNR, and in the meantime, the park board members were going to kind of decide on our highest priorities for that space. And also look at, we do have at least one grant that needs to be used soon, so if we might be able to do it in stages or whatever, once we get those numbers, we're going to call a special park board meeting and go over that, and then we'll be able to make a better recommendation.
The community foundation has already granted some money to this. I don't think their current window has closed for application, have they?
No, it just opened.
I think it's closed for grant applications.
Yeah, I thought it closed.
I believe it's closed, just barely. I think I have a meeting to discuss that on Thursday, so. But if we do it in stages, then there's nothing saying we can't do it next year.
Or the revised visit, or not revised bid, but revised project plan that we're considering as well as a DNR. So once we have that, we can call a special meeting and, you know, see what the park board recommends.
Well, my biggest concern is these costs aren't likely to go down. I'd like to see some sort of a scaled project occurring so that we can at least get some of the bigger stuff out, gone. Is our DNR grant contingent on us doing the whole thing?
I guess kind of what we're waiting for is being answered.
So their expectation is it's similar to what was presented in the, in the grant application. So we'll just have to be very transparent with them as we move forward on what we can and can't eliminate or phase.
Where else did we get funding for this? We've got the...
Lions.
Yep.
Latin Foundation, Magnify Foundation, Lions.
In the blended grant application, we were pretty clear about it being a project that would happen in phases. So I think that, and that's the one, too, where we need to use it up by a certain time.
What about the initiative foundation?
No, I don't think they would contribute to a project like this. It's more economic development related.
Right. Not a business.
So I think we're kind of all on board with, we're going to have to scale it down somewhat because we just can't justify, you know, this large of an expense. But if we can, you know, there's possibility of filling in some of the gap with some additional grant funding or...
Well, what I'm willing to do as well is, once we get revised numbers and plans, in addition to looking at what the DNR is willing to do, I would like to maybe call some, call up some of the local companies and see if we can get some more sponsorship or donation from them.
Thank you. I also had an idea. Foundation grants closed on the 31st. What if we did those like brick fundraisers?
Or buy a brick.
That was what we had kind of talked about, kind of mixed with asking the local businesses, too, that they would get some kind of brick or cobblestone or something like that. So I don't think that would be a bad idea. I think that there would be those in the soccer club, too, who'd be willing to participate. So that's not a bad idea.
Yeah, we haven't got any commitment from the soccer club, have we? And they're the ones that are going to use it the most.
Do they have the ability to make a commitment? I don't know anything about their setup.
Well, they're the ones that took care of the fields, the first couple.
I know, it's a nonprofit. They can do raffles, some type of thing. Even I talked to Doris at Queen Bee. She said organizations want to talk to them about a fundraiser like the Band Boosters did.
Yep.
She is open to talk about it. Well, the Band Boosters raised $14,000.
That was good.
So I mean, come on. They want this for their park. A little initiative would go a long ways.
Well, I think they do things. It's just that because they're not connected to the school or, you know, other organizations.
But they are a club that could definitely raise some money.
Yeah. I mean, I'm just saying, I think they do. I just don't know that we always know about it. But we can definitely be in contact with them and see what they want to do. I'm sure we can work something out.
And what about naming rights for the shelter?
Well, there's an idea.
If a company, XYZ Company, wanted to have naming rights, that would be that XYZ Shelter at the Amby Park. That would probably bring in a lot more money than raffles or whatever.
That's not a bad idea.
First, since up in Alexandria, where there's an auditorium up there connected to the school that is named the tastefully simple auditorium, okay? And that was a private company that decided to do the naming rights on that, and that's where it stuck.
Well, how about this?
We aren't going to make a motion anyway.
I'm going to make a motion.
You're a part of it.
So that way, it's clear that you're...
You're starting an idea, isn't it?
No, no, no.
You are, Mike.
I'm going to incorporate your idea. No, I'm going to move that staff can apply for any and all grants that they see that would fit this project so that it doesn't need to come to council before submitting the application. And that, in negotiating with other donors on this project, that the councils are open to creative ideas, including things like naming rights and other programs in order to sufficiently acknowledge donors' generosity.
Bodie McBoatface.
Good one.
Basically, my motion is for the grant application, and I'm going to incorporate your stuff as a part of it, so.
There you go.
Sure. I mean, I can imagine something like a Centricare Shelter at Amby Park.
Yeah.
I think the Paul Phelan Shelter has a ring to it, so. The Paul Phelan Shelter has a ring to it, so.
Are we out of the ring, huh?
Oh, all right. All right.
So I have made a motion to authorize staff to apply for any and all grants related to this project without having to come back and seek further council approval while we look at limiting costs on this, and also solicit donations from the private sector, acknowledging creative ways of recognizing generosity. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Brick. Any further discussion?
Some of the, I know the Stearns County co-op, Electric Co-op, they do grants. We get them for the museum all the time.
Okay.
And Eaker County does, too, and Vibrant does. So, and they're like at least 500 or 1,000. Every little bit of help.
Yep.
Great. Call them question. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? None? Motion carries. Right. Onto the LaserFiche system. Tarek, we're Jen, since you're here? I don't know.
Maybe Jen. She's been more involved in the LaserFiche side.
Actually, I want to come sit next to Paul so we can hear her.
Yeah, microphone, please.
I want to really get to talk.
Well, what's going on?
Okay. We looked at several LaserFiche companies. They're all relatively the same. Some are better than the others. This particular one, I know Jennifer's been more involved than I have, but we not only looked at LaserFiche, we looked at two other platforms that are competing. None of them were as robust or as used as widely as this among city government. So that's why we thought LaserFiche is the way to go. And then, of course, you know, Belinda and Jennifer have their own particular preference for this OPG III. So that's why I said maybe if Jennifer wants to add a few more words on this particular one.
So and I'll just add in for those who might be watching, the LaserFiche is not like a LaserDisc or the old microfilm things at the museum. It's a digital records platform, so it'll scan things in.
And that we're using ARPA money for.
Right. Looking at using our federal funding for it. But it's to basically go through all of our boxes, of which there are hundreds, digitize them so that they can be easily accessible to staff and, or accessible to the public.
Yes.
We actually toured the city of Albany and the city of Melrose, visited with the staff there that actually use the LaserFiche program through OPG III. They didn't have anything bad to say about it. And competitive pricing is because it's based on population. That's why we can get it cheaper than maybe some of the other platforms. Monomai, it's down by the cities, and the lady there is super helpful. And if we have any questions, it's kind of like having an extra, like, support person to be able to ask questions to, like a super user, instead of having to call the company. We can ask these cities that use it and rely on them, too.
And for city governments, LaserFiche is by far the most widely used platform for digitizing documents. Then, once you decide on a platform, it's just a matter of the company that you choose.
If LaserFiche is approved, there's that, you know, an onboarding process. It's not going to happen overnight. It's going to be a few months of setting up and, you know, building the, the platform itself and how we want records organized. And then there'll be training, and then it's going to be to start scanning the boxes that have been reviewed and deemed ready to be and deemed ready to be scanned into the system.
Does this system have character recognition software so that as you're scanning it?
Yeah, so the minute it goes through, um, the OPG three doors, we call it, everything is OCR'd. And it, uh, we can actually scan off of our main copier printer in City Hall as well as, um, probably getting a couple of desktops that can do like some of our receipts and things like that, especially through accounts payable that will be able to scan. And the minute it goes through this platform, everything is OCR'd. That was one of our biggest questions.
Not OCD, OCR.
And that doesn't, and that also is like if you have a PDF on your, um, computer, you can drop that PDF into this platform and it will OCR that.
And, uh, some, there's a feature too that if you get used to putting the metadata on the top corner, it'll automatically scan to the folder where it belongs. So, I mean, there are some nice features to it as well as, you know.
And that's a protection so we don't have multiple staff using it, but multiple staff miss filing in places. So that we know that all the council agendas will be filed under council agendas. Now, that seems simple, but.
Things happen. Right. This seems to be the best program, and I think it's long overdue, so.
I'll make the motion to approve the Laserfish proposal from OPG three in the amount of fifteen thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars for electronic document storage and authorize the city administrator to sign the documents.
Motion by Sonya stated on the action sheet. I heard a second from Hersberg. Sorry, Neil. Just for the minutes, Tarek, can you talk about some of the other proposals we received and how they compared in price?
Yeah, we received a proposal from DocuWare, which is a competing platform from a company called, uh, Micro Metro, Metro Sales, which is a, another IT provider. Uh, they came in quite higher and they only had, they could only name a couple of cities that use them, uh, in Minnesota. A lot of corporates, but not too many cities. We had a demo with them. I mean, it's a nice software, but it just, it's not widely used by city governments and it was, you know, significant price higher. There's another company out of, I think it's Vice or New London, that they have kind of their own scanning proprietary software that they made. You know, it's, it's less user friendly, it is cheaper, um, not much cheaper though. And one of the things that we definitely did not like about it is anything you want scanned, you have to physically send the box to them, they scan it. So that, that wasn't really as user friendly and seamless as we wanted. So those are the three, uh, companies or platforms.
Before we vote, um, the yearly three thousand one hundred dollar fee, is that included in the fifteen eight ninety for the first year?
I believe it is, well, I, when I read the invoice.
I kind of, I didn't see it in the reading, but. Maybe didn't read it, looked deep enough.
And the other thing on the DocuWare, um, we, we would be charged per user, and we want this to have everybody availability to use the, the platform. So if we, you know, if you're getting charged twelve or fourteen hundred dollars per user, that adds up extremely.
Calling the question, and all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? None. Great. Onto the three eleven Washburn Avenue. Oh, sorry, thanks.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Hersberg to adopt Resolution twenty twenty four dash eleven, the resolution on the records retention schedule. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Brick. Any discussion on that part?
And just to clarify that, so that our now our electronic copies are perceived as they're permanent and they are originals. So we don't have to keep the wet copies or the original signed.
We'll empty that store room.
That's the plan.
Four hundred boxes.
It's going to take more than a year.
Alright, that will go onto the Washburn Court site. Tarek, where we at or Bill? Do we have a signed purchase agreement on this yet?
Yeah, maybe Bill, you give the update because you've been in contact maybe with the attorney, the other attorney on this.
Well, I have been, I mean, honestly, it's been a while, but, um, I've, I've never heard anything back. You know, I mean, I basically said, I emailed the attorney indicating that the, the two things, I mean, that we weren't going to, um, do the sale of the parkland without closing on the purchase of the Washburn Court property, and I never got a response.
About how long ago do you think that was?
I'd say three weeks.
And I think at this point, we.
Well, there's one more option. If you guys are willing to consider. Because in the, in the council, when we decided on how we want to proceed, you know, we said, keep these two together because that's what it was originally, you know, presented to us, is they wanted both transactions to be as one. And then later they decided, no, they want it to be separate, so if you guys want to have them separate, maybe look at doing one before the other instead of trying to do them at the same time. That's another option. I just don't know what your interest is in that.
I don't think there's any guarantee that it'll happen any faster.
Well, no, but I do think we could go ahead and sell the parkland if we want and not have that tied to the Washburn Court. And then just give them a timeframe. We have to have this.
My own feeling is I want to know on both in fifteen days. Yes, no, or never.
That's what I was going to say.
I want to know in fifteen days. On both, and you don't want to be tied together, but he's got fifteen days to say, yes, I want this, and yes, I accept your offer.
Oh, he has to sign the purchase agreement in fifteen days. Cause he could say yes, and then we.
No, it has to be in writing or a purchase agreement. I would say the purchase agreement on, on both ends, both properties.
Then we have to have an absolute ending.
Fifteen?
Fifteen days.
So I'm hearing a motion from Hersberg to instruct, either through the city minister or through the city attorney, to Mr. Opats or Kira, that they have fifteen days to sign a purchase agreement, or the council's going to explore other options. Is that your motion?
That's the motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Excuse me, is, is the motion that these two be still coupled together, that we need purchase agreements signed for the purchase of land in the park and for the sale to the city of the Washburn Court property?
No, they're not tied.
They're not tied.
So if he wants one or the other, it's still a goal. But I want to know in fifteen days where we're at on both properties.
Right, as I understand it, Bill, I think, the, the motion, as I understand it, is we want something that the city can affix a signature to within fifteen days, whether that's coupled together or separate, but something that we could take and just sign off on. I think the preference would be that they're coupled together, but we're not, at this point, let's just get something sent over in writing.
We need to, not ahead, the library board needs to know. It just needs to keep moving.
Yep, that board is stuck until we get a building at this point.
Until we have a site.
Is there a second to Neil's motion?
I have one.
I will. You have a second?
I already agree with him, so.
Motion by Hersberg to indicate to Tom Opats and company that, uh, we're looking for some sort of a purchase agreement within fifteen days to take to council and seconded by Sony. Any further discussion on that?
Yeah, I was going to say, the way you said, he could send it back still saying he wants to tell us we can't do something, you know, like he did in the parkland.
If he wants to put covenants on it, then the city will consider that when we get the purchase agreement. But I think at this point, what do we need in order to put ink to paper is what I'm trying to figure out. Fifteen days, I think is, we'll know.
And I'm, I'm just going to point this out, I mean, if you say fifteen days, you're not going to have, you're meaning on the twenty second, or you might have.
Right, is it two weeks from then?
That's fourteen. Besides, I won't be at the.
Thirteen days.
I guess that's okay. We can always have a special meeting if we need to.
So we'll leave it at fifteen, and Tarek and I will talk once we get something and discuss, decide if we need to call a special meeting or let it wait until our next regularly scheduled one. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed? None. Motion carries. Onto our insurance waiver, essentially pro forma that we're not going to waive our monetary limits and instructing me to sign off on it.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Sony to not waive our limits. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Brick. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed? None. That carries. Page forty-two, Chief Wagner would really like to plan Night to Unite again this year, so. Now, that was one of the things the council, when we dissolved the park or the police and fire boards, and the council would do it. As the liaison to that board, I sort of took it over last year, and I don't have the ability to do it this year, so. Somebody willing to step up and take care of the planning for Night to Unite?
I'll do it.
Okay, Tarek's going to do it.
So you don't need a motion for that, do you?
Yeah.
Okay, make a motion.
Well, I don't know. Sure, Gene's made a motion to appoint Tarek as the leader for the Night to Unite event. I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed? None. That carries. My best part, favorite part of that motion is it doesn't say for this year. That's an in perpetuity motion.
I was just going to say that.
I'll delegate to someone else then.
Ron, do you want to talk to us about this Tea Hangar event or agreement?
Okay, Tea Hangar is, we do have a pilot coming in here. He is actually currently looking for our plan, and he thinks he'll have one within a month or two. We will have one hangar remaining after this, and then we will be able to start a waiting list again. So it took a while to build it back up, but I think we are getting there. As, as mentioned before, there's a lot of momentum going on out there with the pilots, uh, with the schools, et cetera, and all the training. So I guess I would recommend approval.
And I'm just trying in with this from our airport meeting. I know there was some contention between that board and the council when we raised the rates above what they were recommending that we do. But I was very pleased to see how that board was interested in looking at the airport as a whole and trying to find ways to creatively fund various things out there. So there's still a budget deficit, but really those, those votes are key in keeping that operational.
I'll make the motion to approve airport Tea Hangar lease agreement between the City of Painesville and Jesse Springer.
Motion by Hersberg, seconded by Sony. Any further discussion? Right, motion is stated on the action sheet. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? None. Carries. Right, page fifty-five, the youth safety camp. Ron.
Okay, again, uh, this is one of the activities that it does go on out there. This will be the third year in a row that the Stearns County Sheriff has asked to utilize this. And they do a bunch of youth activities, and obviously they show them an aircraft. I think they have a chopper coming in. They do have, uh, the fire department and ambulance of both out there. I think it's a great way for us to promote the facility.
Great. Right, so with that, we're looking at a motion to allow the use of the property on July second, contingent on improved insurance.
I'll make the motion to allow.
Motion by Hersberg, is there a second? Seconded. Seconded by Phelan. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? None. Okay, carries. Ron, before we go on, did we need to discuss the improvement request, or is that still forthcoming?
Uh, it is still forthcoming.
I just didn't see it on the agenda.
Okay, next meeting.
Alright, the parade permit for the Haring High School graduation parade. Looks good to me. Let's say yes.
Well, this is about the fourth year now. Same thing. I'll make the motion to approve Painesville Area High School's, Schools' parade, parade permit. Say that fast, three times. And allow them to use six oh five Lake Avenue for staging on May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
Motion by Sonya, seconded by Brick, is stated on the action sheet to approve the Painesville Area Schools' parade permit, allowing them use of the six oh five Lake Avenue for staging. All those in favor, or any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? None. That carries. Anybody object to future applications like this going on our consent agenda?
The permits?
Actually, I already made a note. Move to consent.
Thank you. Alright, our direct voting agreement with Stearns County. Should we call Kristen up here and tell her to present on it? Just kidding, I won't do that to you, Kristen.
It's a standard agreement we set in the election, so.
Yeah, just the agreement saying that we're going to work with the county to do voting for them.
And, and they are paying us a whopping eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars. We can't turn a dollar, that kind of revenue, we cannot. I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion by Hersberg, as stated on the action sheet, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Sony. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed? None. That carries. Okay, discussion of whether or not we want to have another working session. We just sort of wrapped one with our retreat. Um, do we want to have another one? Or call that one our first quarter and look at next quarter?
And that's the reason it's on here. Typically, you have a quarterly working session. I, the retreat is usually something different, so that's why it's on, to see if you want to try to sneak one in at the beginning of second quarter or the end of third quarter.
I don't think we need one right now. We just had it two weeks ago, so. Let's put it on for, say, July or August.
That was my thought.
Sounds good to me.
So we'll get some dates back on an agenda later for a July or August meeting. Onto page sixty-five, the interest-free loan closing costs. Tarek?
Yeah, I worked with Bill Spooner on this one. Uh, EDAP was discussing, uh, the interest-free loan program that we started last year. Uh, one thing that came up when we had a couple of interested business in applying is closing costs were high because, um, the loan goes up to twenty thousand, but we still would do a title, uh, search on it, uh, along with all the other, um, closing-related items, which added up to just over a thousand dollars. So when we talked about this at EDAP and how can we reduce the closing costs, one suggestion was to forego or do away with the title search and instead go with what is called an owner's and encumbrance report, which I am not too familiar with, but Bill is, uh, that would reduce the cost quite a bit. So from just over a thousand, it comes to about five hundred and sixty-five, I think is on there. Uh, so it was discussed at EDAP. EDAP, uh, you know, is recommending that we go with that.
And how, how many have applied or?
Two have shown interest and not have applied.
You know, I brought up EDAP if for these, if we even wanted them to be sort of secured loans like this, where we would need to do these reports, and the consensus was that we still wanted to do it. That wasn't an, an argument I was going to prevail on in that form.
Well, correct me, Bill, but the owners and encumbrance reports are all around a hundred and seventeen dollars? Something like that?
Yeah, I, I'd say a hundred, hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Yeah, so I mean, it's less than five hundred or something for a title, but that's why they recommended that one.
I also certainly think this is the better way to go than a full-on title report, but for a limited amount, also just not secure it.
I'll make the motion to replace the requirement of a title search with an owner's encumbrance report for the EDAP interest-free loans.
Your motion by Sonya is stated on the action sheet. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Brick. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed? None. Motion carries. Right, Tarek, on the rental of city-owned land.
Yeah, we were approached by Olson Auctioneers to, to rent city-owned land to be able to do an auction on a Saturday this summer in July. We discussed it, uh, policies and procedures, and, you know. and, you know, back with Mr. Olson, and trying to come up with, trying to come up with workable terms for us to, you know, rent this land for him, because he's looking for, really just to rent it for about a week, you know, a few days before the auction, a few days after the auction. So we put together this, you know, agreement with Bill, and kind of reviewed it and figured, yeah, you know, besides filling in the detailed blanks of what time and where and stuff, you know, they are recommending this agreement.
We put the amounts in there though, didn't we?
Yeah, the deposit amount and the rental amount, just not the date.
And he was okay with the 750 deposit?
I sent this to him almost a month ago, I haven't heard back yet.
Well, I move that we approve the agreement if he signs and returns and wants to go ahead, if not, whatever, we are all the same.
There's a motion by Hersberg to approve the agreement with a deposit of $750, is there a second?
Actual, rent was $250.
Yep, that's in the agreement here, so that's why I didn't read that part.
Okay, I'll second it.
Seconded by Soini, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, none, motion carries. I have a part-time liquor store clerk. Tark, you want to tell us anything about this?
Yeah, we interviewed a candidate for liquor store clerk, she has previous experience working at the liquor store, you know, many years ago, and is interested in coming back and working part-time, talked to Bill, the manager there, you know, obviously, he knows her from those days, and, you know, we interviewed her and recommended that we bring her, we hire her again.
Okay, so the recommendation is to hire a grade one, step three, contingent on that passing of the background check, anybody willing to make that motion?
I'll move to hire Jennifer Berg as a part-time liquor store clerk, up to 39 hours per week at grade one, step three, 1664 hour contingent upon passing a background check.
Right, motion by Breck is stated on the action sheet, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Hersberg, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, none, motion carries. Administrative assistant, page 73. Tark, do you want to talk to us about this?
Yeah, this is a position that we, well, we started developing last year, the idea of this role is someone to support the public works director, because there's a lot of reporting requirements, but also take on some of the, you know, administrative duties of an HR function. And then, obviously, because of the project we're gonna be working on, a laser feature, it'll be somebody who can help with the scanning of all the 400-plus boxes that we have, so. We held off on submitting this, but I think now we feel like we should try to see if we can find some way to fill this position.
This is another policies procedures, has been talking about for quite a while, and has recommended to us now, it is budgeted for, so that is there.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to approve the description and start the hiring process?
Do we have a number of hours that we're looking at, because part-time could be up to 32 hours?
Yeah, we discussed 32.
Not to exceed 32 hours.
That's what I thought, oh, it's right there in front of my face. Okay, I'll make the motion to approve the part-time administrative assistant job description, start the hiring process with the position to remain open until filled, and to continue the processes until a final recommendation can be made to council.
There's a motion by Soini that's stated on the action sheet, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Hersberg, any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, none, that carries. Strategic planning.
Yes, I had a recommendation from the mayor here to reach out to Phil Kern, who's an administrator in Delano, because he came recommended as somebody who helps other cities develop strategic plans. Why is a strategic plan important? It is if you're looking at, you know, revising your comprehensive plan, looking at maybe coming up with a new city vision, and in our case, you know, we are looking at revising the comprehensive plan, it's way outdated, but on top of that, we are looking at a downtown project, and I think it's important for us to have a strategy and a vision for what we want the downtown to be, and this will be a good first step to start. So, he has, you know, experience with multiple cities and doing something like this, I looked at it, I had a discussion with him, it's not a large budgetary item compared to, say, if you're gonna do a comprehensive plan, but it's the first step, it's not in lieu of a comprehensive plan, it's the first step before we even get to that stage, and it's the first step before we even sit down and try to imagine what we want downtown to be, this helps us set that strategy in place. So, he presented us with a proposal, and it's in front of you today.
Can you indicate what kind of money it could be?
There's a number in there, 2,800, I think that's, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm looking at the Big Lake proposal, because I have the same question, Neil, it is on page 80 of our agenda, it's sort of right in the middle of the page, the fee for facilitation services to complete would be $2,800.
Okay.
Well, I read it too.
That means a session of four to five hours long with key stakeholders, so not necessarily only council members, but maybe some other key stakeholders, have a session to determine, to set kind of what we want in a motion, he goes back and kind of starts formulating the process, and then we go back and forth a few times to try, you know, tweak it and finalize it, and a final document like the one example there is presented.
The way I learned of him is it just happened to come across, the mayor's listserv put on by the league, cities were talking about strategic planning, and Mr. Kern was recommended by, oh God, the emails got overwhelming on it for a while, but probably seven or eight different cities all said they worked with Phil, and that he's the guy to go to on these things. It wasn't something that I reached out on, it just happened to come in as we were getting ready for our council retreat, and I knew we were going to be discussing updating our comp plan and things like that at the retreat, as that was one of the goals we discussed last year. So, I had Tark look into it, and I think at $2,800, it's a reasonable price, we've talked about redoing the comp plan and how it's quite cost prohibitive, but I think the comp plan would not solve many of the things that we want to solve by a strategic plan, a vision for downtown, a vision for expansion, things like that, those are all things in the strategic plan, not the zoning document that is a comprehensive plan. So, I think if we can do this for 2,800 bucks, that's a good step in the right direction.
I don't think 2,800 for a four to five hour session is not, you know, that seems fairly reasonable to me.
Isn't this pretty much similar to what we did a few years ago with the council retreat, when we were out at the assembly grounds?
I believe you did it in 2015, you had hired somebody.
And he met with us and goals and strategies and all that stuff, but like I said, that's almost 10 years ago.
Yeah.
Do we recall?
Ron and I were the only ones here.
Yeah.
All pals here then, you were so new though.
Jen went back here.
I was there.
I bet you were there, Neil.
Maybe not at the retreat, but you were on staff.
No, she was at the retreat, she was at the strategic plan, I thought you were.
Do we recall what the cost was back then?
Oh, it's gotta be, it was at least this much, I think, because we, he was actually here for two days.
I thought it was two days.
It was two days.
Yeah, we got two days up there.
Yeah.
And we paid for renting the.
The assembly grounds.
Assembly grounds and food, yeah.
So what we're saying is this is a bargain by comparison.
Yeah.
It sounds very reasonable.
Yeah, I think so, let's go for it.
I guess I'll make the motion to approve and go ahead.
We have a motion by Hersberg to move forward with strategic planning with Phil Kern, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Breck, I'm gonna hold off calling the question just until Jen gets back, because we did ask her to sort of indirectly to look something up.
Okay, as long as we're not voting yet, did he say when he could start, or anything?
I'll have to look at my last email from him, but we did have a conversation on the phone and went kind of through what this will look like.
Absolutely, I remember. So it was less, it was more money or less money?
I can't find it.
That's okay. We kind of know that it was probably close to the same, plus we rented, we paid the assembly grounds, and we paid, you know, we had food, and it was two days, so.
I'll check on cost.
Before you knew we couldn't meet outside city limits.
We was. We couldn't meet outside city limits.
How dare we? The legislature's gonna slap us.
I had a connection for.
All right, all those in favor of the motion of moving forward strategic planning with Phil Kern indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, none, motion carries. All right, Tark wants to buy some more computers.
Well, I've been buying computers throughout the year, one and two here and there, but all of a sudden, we get, you know, a request for five, one for the liquor store, one for public works, three to replace really, really, really old DMV computers.
And so is the liquor store, when it really died.
Yeah, that one was gonna die. So, when they put together the proposal to us, I liked it, I kind of, I was able to negotiate down on the professional services fee, I got that knocked down a bit, laptop prices and desktop prices, I thought were pretty competitive, and it came out to be about 5,000, so you guys need to okay it.
Says 7,500.
Well, I say it's about 5.
About 5, yep. Now, what I know, Tark, you've been working on updating the sort of replacement schedule for these things, and getting that established through Marco.
Marco keeps track of that, and Belinda has her own spreadsheet she keeps track of as well, yeah.
I thought that was something that didn't quite exist when you first came on, so now you're creating that, right.
We're buying one from Marco then, it looks like?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve the purchase of five computers and setup in the amount not to exceed $7,569.70 from Marco.
All right, there's a motion from Soini, is stated on the action sheet, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Breck, any further discussion? Were you itching to say something? Neil? Okay, just the way you moved out of the corner of my eye, that's all. All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, none, motion carries. All right, we do have a few things of information on here, the Stearns County Environmental Office is holding a public hearing on a number of things that are identified in there, our post-burger came in and reviewed our training protocols and our policies and said that we're good enough for them, in essence, okay?
We passed.
We passed, well, that's all we can ask for. So with that, we do have a couple of items for our proposed closed session, if somebody wants to make a motion for us to go into closed session to discuss, property located at 300 Kira Court, parcel ID 70.39118.0531, per the closed meeting law, or open meeting law, rather, sections 13D.03 and 13D.05 sub 3.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Soini, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Seconded by Hersberg, by the way, Kristen, thank you. At 7:25, we're back in open session, we met to discuss the property located at 300 Kira Court, ID number 70.39118.0531, considered a purchase offer that was received by the city, and I believe that somebody on the council here is ready to make some sort of a motion on that.
I will make the motion that we accept the purchase agreement, purchase price on lot 300, and the rate of refusal on lots 295, 275, 255, 225, and 305.
Right, so the motion by Hersberg is to accept the purchase offer as presented, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Soini, any further discussion on that? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion does carry four to one. Right, on that, before we talk about a closed session again, did we want to revisit the topic of requests for proposals for realtors?
If we only have three or four lots, and we have like four phone calls today, I think we should just hang tight.
Yeah, I think we share the revenue, and we're doing very well ourselves, I think that'd be a disservice to our taxpayers. We need a motion to.
Yeah, so there's a motion to reconsider and not do requests for proposals on realtors.
I would say reconsider at its timeframe, whether it's six months or a year or something like that, this is a good activity with phone calls right now, yeah, we don't want to be foolish to hire a realtor, but when, who knows what's gonna happen if it starts to slow down.
Well, we'll get, make it through the summer anyway.
Yeah, yep.
I think at this point it'd be a waste of their time too, because to make it worthwhile and to make it.
When we only have four lots available.
Well, yes, and to make it financially viable for us, then, you know, I just, yeah, I think it'd be a waste of their time right now.
Is somebody willing to make our motion to not move forward with requests for proposal on realtors?
I will make that motion.
Is there a second?
I will second it.
Motion by Hersberg, seconded by Soini, any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, none, motion carries. All right, is there a motion to go into closed session to talk about the property located at 18799, County Road 33?
At least three of them.
Pursued to the same sections of the opening meeting law.
I'll come in tomorrow morning. Uh, yes.
All right, since no one was listening to me.
I said yes.
Who are you?
I was explaining something. I made my motion, sir.
Motion to go into closed session, pursued to the same provisions of the opening meeting law to discuss the offer for real property at 18799, County Road 33. I heard it from Megan, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Paul, any further discussion? All those favored to keep are saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, carries. Okay. All right, we are back on, we're open here, 7:36, we met to discuss the property over there by the Aeration Pond, and received some information on a proposed agreement, and I think the council has given the information necessary for staff to move forward. So with that, we have no further business before the council, and we stand adjourned. Thank you.